Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, the 19th of November, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call Rol.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Counsel Freeman?
Here.
Counsel Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
Counsel Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counsel Farris?
Here.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Good to see everyone here tonight on this very brisk evening. We will go ahead and start off with, we don't have any special orders of business. We do have two people for committee reports, so we'll go to that first. First up will be Crystal Wilson with the Planning Commission report. So if you will come on down, your name and city of residence, and then the time is yours.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Crystal Wilson, and I am from Kaiser, here to report out on the Planning Commission of last week. First thing, we elected a new Chair and Vice Chair. The new Chair is Gary Whalen, and the new Vice Chair is myself.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Second is, we approved the minutes from the previous session. There was no appearance of interested citizens. We continued the public hearing on proposed text amendments, Sections 1.2 and 2.403, modifying the standards for accessory dwelling units, and that was approved through the committee. New and old business, Mr. Brown reported on the information of the Building Land Supply Housing Needs Analysis Project Advisory Committee, that is the Malfool, and will be formed at the next council meeting. The meeting will be open to the public, and he urged the commissioners to attend. There was no council liaison, and the December session will be canceled.
All right.
That's everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? So the accessory dwelling unit that was continued, so that will resume in January, is that correct? Or is that coming to us?
The commission made a recommendation it will be coming to you sometime in January, is my guess.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we'll have it in December or not.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parks, Mr. Holland. And he asked me to pass out these pictures, which were taken today?
They were taken today.
Today. These are the bathrooms at Kaiser Rapids Park. So pass them down, we'll pass them that way.
Thank you very much for letting me speak today about our Parks Board meeting that we had on Tuesday. We had some interested citizens that talked about concerns that they have about the parks, because they've been promised things over the years, and they're still waiting for some of this stuff. And they don't understand that some of this stuff takes a little time. Also, the West Neighborhood Association was there, and they had some concerns. That was taken care of when Robert from Parks talked, and sometimes it's deep more communication. And he did a very good job explaining what they're doing right now, what they're doing next month, what they're doing next year, and just laying out the schedule for the next two or three years. And he did a very good job on that, and I think that satisfied for some of the people that are waiting to get pathways and tennis courts resurfaced, so. Then we had a report, as you know, that each member reports on two parks. So to add to Robert Johnson's deal, everybody asking for stuff. When we go visit parks, we see things that we'd like to have done, and so it just adds to that. There's a lot of things that need to be done in the parks, and I'm amazed at how fast Robert's getting some of this stuff done. He does a good job. We talked about a plaque for the solar eclipse, and I don't know if that was sent to you?
Yeah, it was.
It was, okay. And so we brought that up. And what we'd like to do, that picture that's there is the one that's at Volcano Stadium, because that was a very historical time in our community. And we want to do the same thing at the amphitheater at the top of the concourse, and put it in the concrete. Now, the one at Volcano Stadium was a capsule, we're not talking about doing that. They'll reopen that up at the next solar eclipse. We're just talking about putting a plaque that's going to be embedded in the concrete. Subject came up again, this is the second time it's come up, about a caretaker at Kaiser Rapids Park. And Rol, and I think you mentioned that that's so, that the city's working on that now? Or they're talking about it in meetings, or?
According to Chris, we were going to look into, but I don't think we've really, like, talked about it.
Okay, all right.
Didn't you, didn't you, are we, are we done with that?
No, I queried the council, and the council expressed no interest in pursuing the matter any further, since the council actually directed that we eliminate the position to begin with.
Yeah, but aren't we, isn't that part of the?
There was some question as to whether or not the Parks Board perhaps would like to look at options of how to address a couple of the issues that the caretaker used to do, like evening patrol and trash on weekends. Some of that, we are going to take care of internally by potentially adjusting some hours of staff during the high seasons. But there may be one or two items that we simply can't do with the way we currently are doing it.
Yeah, there's several among that.
But a caretaker is not the way we're going to be doing that in the future.
Okay, I'll pass that on back to him.
What was discussed about the night hours, or something to that effect?
Only that, only that the current residents out there call in when there are issues. So we do have eyes on the park, but they don't do patrolling of the park any longer like they used to, so.
Actually, the police department comes through the park at night, 1:00, 2:00, 4:00. They, I see their cars in there quite often.
Because they're down there watering?
Yeah. Actually, I'm hiding from them, so they don't see me. I've only been stopped one time out there. Anyway, also today, I had a chance to visit the bathrooms at the Kaiser Rapids Park. And she's passed pictures, I think, around. It's really kind of nice. It's gonna be a real plus for that out there for the whole park, and it's big. It's not a small bathroom, it's big. So what I can see, they're doing a good job on it, and probably a couple of months away, Bill, and it'll be done, so. Okay, as you know, Bob Zelinski dissed all the orchards out there, really did a good job. Boy, did he have some big equipment out there. I was amazed that, but it's a big park, so you needed the bigger equipment. He dissed that, I think, three times, and poor Mark Calier had every time he'd disc it, get 12 guys behind tractors and put it in the bins that they had, because there was a lot of stuff that got kicked up. But boy, did they do a good job, and you should thank Mark Calier for all the work he did, because that was a lot of work in the heat, so, pretty impressive. Jeff Davis was there to talk about putting exercise equipment in the parks. And I think, Mary, he's been working with you quite a bit on that, hasn't he?
He has contacted me, but that, we haven't really had a conversation.
Right. So he's moving along pretty fast. He's trying to get grants for that. In addition to it, I talked to him about, because there's like $8,000 left in the matching funds there that he could apply for, because we're halfway through. Somebody better do it, or we're going to lose those matching amount of money. But I think there's about $8,000 left in there. But he's doing a good job, and he's going to report back to the next meeting. And all the Park Board members are very interested in putting exercise equipment in these parks. Now, we know it all can't be done at one time. We're probably going to have to spread that out over a two- or three-year period. But every Park Board member thought this was a real plus for our parks, so looking forward to that. I'll end, I'd like to just talk for a few minutes and do a wrap-up of what happened at the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater this year. It was very successful. We were, tenants was up 30% to 35%, which was kind of surprising this year, because once you get to a level, it's got to level off. We had three concerts that were completely full. The amphitheater really runs really smooth now. We don't have lines for the beer anymore, because we got a new beer company. People that run the concessions, awesome. We got great cooks. This year, the parking was awesome. We didn't have any trouble with the parking. So things are going really good. The only problem is, the more successful you are, the more money you lose when you do free concerts. And that's getting to be a concern for me, because when you have big concerts, you have to double the security. The bathrooms cost more. You got to more than double the parking, people that are doing all the parking. So the costs go up pretty heavy there, so. That's all I got for the report. I'll answer any questions. The next Park Board meeting is on December 11th, and I'd like to invite City Council to come to a Park Board meeting.
All right, questions? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Based on that grant of the 8,000, do you have somebody working on that, so we don't lose that opportunity?
Yes, Jeff is working on it for the exercise equipment in the parks.
And what's the date on that, that we have to have that completed by?
By July 1st, or 31st, 1st?
June 30th.
June 30th, yeah, July 1st.
I was thinking like, next month or something.
No, no, we've still got some time, but the process, just to get this stuff through, takes two or three months, and they have to have spent the money before July 1st.
Understood. Well, we can spend the money.
I think we can allocate it.
Thank you, Clint.
Clarification, does it just need to be obligated, or does it have to be spent by June 30? Because this is the Parks Matching Grant. This is ours.
Madam Mayor, the Parks Board rules, if you will, around the matching grant program stipulate the project must be complete by June 30.
Okay. And is Jeff looking at a match or some sort of funding through the Heal program? The Heal City Program? I'm getting a head nod.
I don't know.
We are Heal, we are a Heal City, which is healthy eating and active living city. And there are grants available for projects such as this through that program.
There are people working on that?
Yeah, ma'am, for the record, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser Parks Board. We are looking at the Heal Grant right now. In terms of the timing, there's a couple different windows for when we can apply for those. Dylan, we've actually formed a small committee of myself, Zyra, and Dylan, along with Jeff, to look at some of these grants and determine the timeline. Realistically speaking, for this year, I think we may be, I don't remember if it's either December or if it's April. So if it's April, we're still good, but if it's December, we're a little bit too late, because I think the safe routes to Parks was December, or maybe January. So we were a little bit behind on that one in order to apply for those. So we'll verify the dates on that, but we'll pursue it either for this set of projects or possibly, as Clinton mentioned, the next set of projects that might come in the next fiscal year.
Thank you, appreciate that. Counsel Herrera?
Yeah, one thing, first of all, appreciate your concert series, that was really great this year. But I want to acknowledge the volunteers, you know, the regular suspects, Gary Whalen and Catherine, and Mark, and of course, Daryl.
Daryl.
The same four guys, and they're all time, so I want to thank them.
Yeah, what's also nice is, we get behind. There's always people in the audience that has helped it with the facility over the years. They just get in the concert stand and help work. I'm very lucky to have the volunteers that we have had consistently there, because nobody gets paid, and it's free concerts, so it's worked out well.
Thank you very much.
I ask the magic brain that is Google. The grants are actually due on the 16th of November, so we've missed it for this fiscal year. So if we look into projects for next fiscal year, we'll plan it accordingly to meet the grant opportunities for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Clint, so much. All right, that's all I have for committee reports. Is there anybody here to report on a committee? Then we'll go on to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled tonight, that is solid waste and recycling services and rates, Kaiser Development Code text amendments, development standards, and resolution authorization for supplemental budget, general administration contingency with a resolution authorization for supplemental budget, general fund, police vehicle. So if you want to speak to us on something other than those three, now is a good time. Okay, I will take that as none, and we'll move on then to our first public hearing. This one is Item 7A, solid waste and recycling services and rates, and open the public hearing. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lauren Sanitation Services and Valley Recycling and Disposal, who are two franchise solid waste haulers and recyclers, are proposing a rate increase in their fee structure in response to the significant changes that have occurred in the recycling markets this last year. They have provided options for the council to review for rate adjustment strategies, and the proposal was provided in your packet. They are also here to present their case and answer any questions you might have. Staff recommends City Council hold this public hearing to take public input regarding the solid waste rate increase request, and evaluate the appropriateness of approving a rate increase. Unless there are further questions afterwards, council can then close the hearing. I recommend City Council grant one of the options requested. However, the choice of which one is policy matter strictly for you. If the council agrees to a requested increase, I'm sorry, if the council agrees that a requested increase is warranted, it is then recommended City Council direct staff to prepare the appropriate order to bring back at the next City Council meeting authorizing the rate increase as allowed for within the applicable solid waste hauler franchise agreements. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And at this point, I would invite John and the group, whoever is going to come down and represent the haulers, and have at it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. This is Kevin Ginger. He does our financials for us. He's a CPA. Thank you for your time tonight. You have a packet in front of you that has three options presented with changes in rates. As most of you have heard, we've had a downturn in the recycle markets due to the China sword. We unfortunately have no control over the markets. Between two companies in Kaiser, we absorbed a $234,000 loss in 2018, about split equally. Moving forward, we are requesting an adjustment in rates. There is nothing in the rates to cover the loss, so we're going to eat that loss for the year 2018. We have seen multiple other jurisdictions do rate adjustments. Salem just did one. Marion County has one slated with a public hearing soon. So the first option is to wait the increase 23% on the residential, which I'm opposed to. We would like options two or three, and what that does is it applies 7.5% to commercial. Commercial has always been at a little bit higher profit margin than the residential, so we think they need to bear some of the expense, because there's some of the problems with multifamily dwellings and, you know, commercial businesses that contaminate the stream. So, and option three, it gets the gallon. I remember last time we were up here, somebody had spoke about the cost per gallon. It gets the cost per gallon lined up a little closer. Kevin can speak to that in a bit. It, the cost for the recycling is about 202 per customer in the residential side per month, is what it comes to. So the tipping fees, at one point, we were getting paid for commodity, which was anywhere from $10 to $20 a ton in 2017. And we're currently, it did go as high as about 100 to pay to get rid of it per ton, and we're back down in the 60 to 70 range right now, so it's kind of flattened off. And we wanted to let it flatten off before we came in in front of you with a bigger ask, so. You know, and with this rate adjustment, like we do most of them, we'd be happy to waive any change in service fees for two months, because we typically charge to change the service and go out and wash the carts and bring them in. We'd be happy to waive that fee for two months, because we do know this is a big ask, so.
Okay. And did you want to say something, or shall I open it for questions from the council?
I think John's done a good job. John's done a good job summarizing it, so, yeah, we're here to just answer questions.
Yeah, I think actually, if you wouldn't mind, if you could go into a little more detail between the three different options. What each one actually does in relation to commercial versus residential split of the actual burden?
Okay, so in the first option, what we did was really just take the cost increases that we see for, you know, the future. Most of this is on the projection of the 2019 operating costs, and put all of that rate increase on the burden of the residential customers. Not obviously the best option. The majority of the commingled recycling, which is really the biggest issue in the rate increase, is produced by the residential customers. There is some that comes out of the commercial service, but that's predominantly where, you know, where the cost change is coming to the current operations. So in the next two options, they're similar, but we took a little different approach, really just in how to apply the rate change. The commercial is exactly the same, so a 7.5% increase on the rates of the commercial rates. But for the residential and the multifamily rates, in option two, it's just a simple, across the board, it's 19.75% increase, but that's layered on to each of those main rates. So if you have a higher rate, like a larger container, a larger cart, then you're going to get a larger per-dollar increase for that month. In the option three, the difference is, what we took is 11.5%, which is basically the cost increases that we're seeing from fuel and labor and medical insurance, and just the general other equipment and facility costs that we have. And we put that on top of those rates evenly. And then we took the 235,000 dollars of recycling costs that we're seeing, the amount we're actually paying out right now to dispose of the recycling. And we divided that out among the number of customers, and take that down. So it comes out to $2.02 per month, and so we just added that into each rate. So then it brings, you know, those rates a little bit closer together between the smallest 20-gallon service and the largest 65-gallon service. So does that make sense?
If I'm reading that right, that's, well, I guess, a question and then a comment. So option two, I had it for a second, and then it just disappeared. I'll ask my question, I'll ask my question first. Which one of these rates, there was a question the last time you came in for a rate increase about potentially bringing the subsidy that the commercial class pays down, so that every class roughly pays their own fair share. Understanding that in most waste and recycling businesses, the commercial class subsidizes the residential class to some extent. My assumption is that option one does that some. It puts all of the increase on residential, so that would bring the subsidy of commercial down some. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
So one, so number one is the option that levels out the subsidy, brings the classes closer together in terms of actual cost of service. And then option two, I remember, I was going to say, if I'm understanding this correctly, option two then provides a, an incentive to actually reduce the size of your can. Because option three increases per gallon. So the bigger my can is, the more I pay, versus option two, wait a minute. So maybe it's option three that?
Option two would be, the bigger the can, the more you pay.
Okay, so that actually provides an incentive to reduce the size of your can. Was that an intent, or is that just a function of how the rate laid out?
It was really just to provide two different ways of looking at it. So I think it kind of depends on your perspective. The recycle, so everyone has the same size recycling container. Probably generally, you have a larger garbage container, because you're a bigger family, or you have something else going on in your household that you need a bigger container. Obviously, that isn't entirely true across the board, but probably generally. We have seen the number of customers choosing that largest size increase over this last year, or since, well, over the last two years. And so that probably is going to be a challenge for people, if this rate goes up, to decide what to do if they did that, because they actually needed that extra space, maybe because they've changed their recycling habits. So the other, the other kind of piece of that is that, you know, what, how someone chooses to recycle is obviously, you know, on each individual. And so it's, I think it's difficult to tie the rate directly to the size of the garbage can, because you have three different services going on. And there could be a lot of different reasons why people choose one service or the other. So I don't see one as penalizing, or, you know, any certain type of person. It's just different options on how to price it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to start with Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when we have this up before us, I always feel like I should have a finance degree or a degree in rocket science. I don't know what the, what the, what the deal is. This gets really quite complicated to really try and decipher, so. Having some of this clarification is really quite helpful. At some point, maybe I'd recommend condensing your narrative that you include with the packet here. That's really hard to track. It really is. I'm a little bit more of a visual person with respect to the table. That's, or the tables, that's a bit more helpful. The narrative is rather confusing, so that's kind of where I get lost. Wanted to get to maybe more, a couple of questions here. Are you, is the increased cost a particular type of the service? You know, and that, when I say that, I, you know, I, as a homeowner, I'm, you know, I've got the yard debris container, I've got my blue cart for recycling, and then I've got just the straight trash container. So is this for kind of across-the-board type of a rate increase? Is there any differentiation in terms of how this is all shaking out?
So in this case, about half of this increase is really due to the changes in the commingled recycling processing fee. So specifically that blue cart, the cost to get rid of the material that you put in there.
Right, okay.
So in 2017, the haulers actually were paid for that material. I think I had like $60,000 on the year.
Yep, saw that.
And now we have to actually write a check.
That's costing you.
Yeah, to dump that material.
So, and then that, you know, I don't know if, maybe, I'm hoping, you know, I'm not going too far afield, but, you know, I'm trying to think here, you know, the stuff that's in my just straight trash container, that's going to Covanta for that to get burned, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, so the blue stuff goes to Garten and then wherever, correct?
Garten or Portland.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a couple processors.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then where is our yard debris going?
It goes down to the Processing and Recovery Center by Coffin Butte, over by Corvallis.
Right, okay, okay. So again, back on the question then, is this an across-the-board rate increase that we're looking at? Is there a differ, I'm just trying to determine, is there a differentiation between the types of service that we're talking about? Or is it just kind of one main package deal here? That's where I guess I'm getting lost here a little bit.
Right, so in this case, you know, everyone's provided that same-sized blue cart. And so in option three, we did the math differently on, and provided, broke the cost out into two components. And the cost of that blue cart piece, we've put on equally to each of those rates. And the other costs, we've indexed them as a percentage. So if you had a $10 rate, it went up 11.75%, but if you had a $20 rate, it went up 11.75%, so that's obviously twice as much.
Okay.
And so then, you know, in option three, those people with the larger containers won't see as big an increase as the people in option two. And so specifically, if we're looking at the 65-gallon cart, there's about 37% of our customers are in that service. In option two, that would go up six dollars and eight cents a month. But in option three, it would be five dollars and fifty-six cents. And then on the other side of that coin, there's about, let's see how many people, around five percent of the people have the smallest service. And that change is, there's two different service levels at that, at that level. But the option two, it's either two dollars and fifty cents if you don't have the yard debris or four dollars if you do. And then in option three, it's three dollars and fifty-one cents or four dollars and thirty-five cents. So a little, they bear a little bit more of a rate increase in that option three. Whereas the largest container is a little bit less.
Okay, and so then just one other question here perhaps. The, the charts that we were, I presume that y'all gave us the charts that were in our packet here? Okay, so the, where, the, the column says 2016 rate. That's our present rate that we're paying?
Yes.
And so then the, I know this is an obvious question, but that's where I can, I need help here. So then, so then we would be picking, excuse me, one of the three options then, perhaps to go forward on then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and then just finally, then main, our residential impact, or residences than homeowners, that's just, that is the, whatever page number that is, page seven of our packet here. Residential curbside cart service packages. And then you've got it broken out on the next page to multifamily, mobile home, commercial and so forth then, right? Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Councilor Herrera. Oh, I'm, you had a question, uh, Councilor?
I had a question for Kevin, if it's okay. Councilor Herrera can go first.
Okay, Councilor Herrera and then we'll-
Real quick, you kind of mentioned on, on option three. As I read option three, the eleven point five for commingle and seven point five for commercial increase, what does it mean? Dropbox, according to the option three, there's no rate increase. But what is a special service? And, and you said that, that proposed to change approximately. But what is, what exactly is special services for? Because I think a Dropbox is one thing, what would special services be?
Special services would be if we go out and do a cleanup or a clean out.
Okay, that's kind of what I, a pickup, maybe?
Yeah, a special pickup. We have rates for most of the commodities like map-
Is that very common, John?
It's very, very common, very common. We do a lot of it.
Last thing, and that, and that also has the, the two point, two dollars and two cents for the service fee increase on the option three, correct?
On option three, yes, and that's included in that number on the right-hand side. So it's not gonna be, it's, it's a seven point five percent increase for the commercial. It's eleven point five for the residents plus the two oh two. That would not be seen on their bill. It would be the regular service charge, just one line item. So we wouldn't, that's just for your guys' information. We wanted to let you know the number.
And that service fee disappears in one and two, does it?
What's that? No, it, it's in there, but it's not, we just spelled it out. We wanted you guys to understand what the impact was. And it's, the impact is the same all the way across the board, option one, option two, and option three.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
All right, city attorney and then Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kevin, I wanted to go back. You had said that, and maybe I misheard, that half the increase is due to the recycling issues. Is that, is that right?
Well, approximately, yeah. So just to answer, yeah, Councilor Anderson's question, he was, I, at least what I thought he was asking was, is there a specific thing that's causing this? And so if you look at it, it's about, yeah, half of the cost is coming specifically from the change in that commingled processing fee.
And so the other half of the increase is just general increase in expenses?
Yeah, so over, so the last time we had a re-increase was, what, fall of sixteen, I believe, yeah. So the costs that have, and the costs that we project through 2019. So that's predominant, I mean, the majority of our cost is actually disposal, but, you know, that isn't going up at this time. So then it's labor and then, yeah, fuel and repair and maintenance on the vehicles are the, the largest pieces of that.
We saw an increase about thirty-eight to forty percent in fuel this last year.
And if I could, Madam Mayor, one other one. So option one doesn't include any increase in commercial or just the regular non-recycling increase? No, no increase at all?
No increase at all in commercial.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have lots and lots of questions and statements. First of all, I want to say that I've been on city council six years. This is the third time you've come to us, so I got a headache, just so you know. And then after reading the options, I understand the blue cart thing. When we had lost our recycling, we went up to a bigger, larger can too. So then we paid more. So if, if I went with option one, I can, or option was it two? I could go back down to my small one and maybe save more money there and just stuff it all in. I, I mean, I, I'm just a little concerned because I thought that, I thought that most of what we were doing tonight was blue cart, but now you're saying it's not. It's half blue cart and half fuel and all that other stuff. So I find that just a little, a little confusing. So there's no option for people to get rid of the blue cart though? It all has to be a bundle, is that correct?
It has, you have to provide recycling, the DEQ requires it with cities over four thousand. So you don't have to have it, but it's still built into the rate structure.
Okay, okay. And, and I have one more question. So if, if we were to approve one of these, or go forward with one of these options tonight for approval, how do you perceive rate increases in the future? Is it gonna be every two years, every three years, every, I mean, I mean, is this gonna handle this for a while? Or you're only saying this is gonna be only through 2019?
Well, that's as far as we've projected. So the last summer here was the change in the rate at the burner, very substantial change. And this one, we did not obviously project that this, this event was coming. And this actually happened about a year ago is when it changed very significantly. So the haulers have been kind of living with this, you know, twenty thousand dollar a month bill for, for some time. So under hopefully normal circumstances, we would see what we normally are, which is maybe a three to four percent increase and not something as substantial as the last time and this time that we've brought.
Okay, that, that was all the questions that were brought to me that I'm bringing to you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna keep going down the line, Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just kind of going back to the, this is a result of a whole new way of doing business as far as the, the market has, has shifted. So you had mentioned that, that there's been a huge increase in the number of people requesting the bigger cans, and you have said that one reason for that might be the, yeah, the, the lack of, you have to put more in the trash can that doesn't go in the recycling. And so that's a, a reason for that. So it, it's option two that would kind of accommodate that then? As far as at least leveling that out a little bit more?
Well, so in option three, they, the people in the larger can wouldn't see as large an increase as they would in option two.
Okay, so it's option three then that?
Yes.
Okay, and just kind of going back on, I know there have been some, some education efforts involved with this new, new way of doing business. Can you just take a few minutes to explain where people can find that information so that they aren't surprised or find or whatever else?
Yes, Marion County has a great website, and then the Mid Valley haulers also have it on their website. We have hired a public educator to come out and do education in the public, and he is happy to put on a presentation for anybody. You know, it's, this is something we didn't predict. I've been doing this for a long time and I haven't seen this coming.
So if somebody wants to contact you for, I'm hearing this, for that educational presentation, you just get ahold of your waste hauler and you will make arrangements for that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, good to know.
Excellent. I'm, I'm gonna keep going down if I can. Okay. So, wanna yield to Councilor Anderson? Okay.
I can't remember that guy's name, John, but Reed Anderson? Ree-
Reed Anderson.
Reed Anderson, okay.
Isn't it Anderson?
Yeah. Yeah, same as yours.
He, I think he joined our, I think he joined our Rotary, my Rotary club, so that's why. But I was just gonna comment that is, he does an outstanding presentation. It's extremely well done and really easy to understand, even for a Rotarian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Freeman.
Yes, Reed, Councilor Anderson was at our community conversation on recycling. See? And he also presented to the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association as well. That's what I was telling Council Reed, he needs to come to Southeast Kaiser neighborhood. So some of my questions have been answered, but when I read this proposal, I hope Ron Burson is listening, because during our budget talks, he always talks about the commercial water rate and the residential water rate. And we always pay more on the residential side as well. Bill's grinning at me. And so when I first read this, I can tell you, I had some real heartburn because I'm seeing there's not a huge increase for our commercial people. And I see a huge hit for residential and multifamily. So that's where I'm kind of, I guess where my heartburn initially set in. And I'm not a fan of number one at all because I don't believe residential should bear the full increase. I know this is an open, public hearing tonight, and I actually would hope that we would leave it open and not make a decision tonight. And that is nothing against you guys at all in your presentation, but I just think this is a bigger discussion, and I hope that we can do some, some outreach within the next month to, to get some community input on this. I know the Kaiser Times here, and I'm sure Eric's gonna have a story in the front page of the paper. But then, but my other point is, maybe page two, you know, but, not this week, okay. Well, maybe, you know, we all can, you know. Because I think it's something really important, and I think, and not to shed light on this, but we are coming into the holiday season and people are busy. And I guess I don't want your guys' phones, they're probably gonna ring off the hook anyway come February one with a rate increase. But we've done, I think, a good job as council of trying to get the word out and trying to do some community education and, and getting feedback from the people that we serve. And so I just really hope that we, you know, take some time to think about it. I also understand the business need that you have to give your clients a thirty day notice, so we need to be cognizant of that as well. So we can't just leave it open till, let's say, our first meeting in January, right? That's not gonna do you or, or our constituents any favor. But I just think that we really need to take some time and, and think about it. So I appreciate the detail. I think every time you guys come to present to us, the detail gets better and better and better. But we also change on what we like to see. So I just really appreciate the time and effort that was put into the information that you shared with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a couple of questions and bear with me, because I, I have some concerns too. And so I hope I express this more eloquently than I feel at this moment. So one of the things you didn't address was the additional fees that you're charging your customers for the recycling bin being incorrect or with, you know, maybe not enough outreach with education, things like that, which I think is a combination of things, not necessarily a fault. But, but I think when people go to pay their bill and see there's a lot of fees, I see that you're recovering a lot of these fees from individuals. Since what I'm hearing from neighbors, for example, are, people are moving towards the bigger garbage cans, which is what you're sitting here telling me, of course, that there's a bigger need for that because people are so frustrated getting the higher fee, excuse me, the higher fees, that they're just going ahead and not using the recycling at all, which is sad because it's taken us a long time to get to this point, to see that attitude of, well, I'm not gonna recycle because lord forbid, I'm gonna get these extra bills and then totally just fill my garbage. And then you're going to give them more fees for a bigger garbage can. So I feel like they're getting dinged like three different ways here. So if you do this increase in fees, are you going to stop, stop giving fees to each individual home that, that makes a mistake?
Well, what I can tell you right now is we haven't charged fees for, we've charged it for contaminated stuff that was never programmed material. So styrofoam, film, garbage, diapers. We haven't charged for three through seven plastics or shredded paper. So the fee is a way to get them to call us so we can have a conversation with them. We always wipe that first fee off and sometimes the second fee off. But we need that communication with them so we can send them some more information and get them educated and, and try to, I've had many lengthy conversations with customers, and there is a lot of confusion and, you know.
Well, one of the questions I did ask at the window was, are you sending out literature and information to each household showing them, please don't put this and use this? Or, you know, that education, and, and I was told no, that that didn't, nor did I receive one, so I'm assuming that that has not happened.
That's incorrect, it has happened. It's happened from the county.
The bill, is it in the bill?
It's happened from the county and it's happened from us. We did a mailer to every address in Marion County, the haulers did.
Then I'm incorrect, but I, I have not seen it. I thought it was in the bill. And I, but I'm hearing the attitude of, well, we'll get a bigger can and just stop recycling, which is sad to me. But, so you're gonna continue to charge fees plus the increase? Is that what you're saying?
If somebody puts diapers in a recycling cart, we're gonna charge the fee. It's a contamination fee, and there's no human that should have to sort diapers on a line.
Sure, but it's, I'm speaking of like garbage bags, just the, you know, the Winko garbage bags that are ending up.
That's never been a programmed material.
Wow, okay. I don't wanna get into specifics because, I mean, that's what I've been told at your office, so I don't know what's considered what. But, so those are my concerns. And I look, as I read this, I was, found it interesting that the only three options were all increases, not, you know, are we, you know, what are our options other than, yes, you're getting an increase because we've given you three increases? So I'm, I'm concerned with this, I'm concerned with the, just even the confusion of the public not having the right information and getting the opportunity to come or speak or ask questions. And so I, I think I agree with Councilor Freeman on that. We need a little bit better outreach and us the right information to share with our constituents because we do represent all of them. So for that reason, I, I hope that we continue to get them involved in this conversation so that there's not a lot of anger or a lot of resentment or, if, there's a lot of misperception, unfortunately.
I do understand, I mean, I totally understand and respect what you're saying.
Thanks, John.
So I'm gonna back cleanup, no pun intended. I just have a couple of questions. Yeah, I'll, I'll circle back, but I'd like a, a turn. So thank you for bringing up the educational outreach and education, because I was gonna ask about that. And, you know, I have a little sign up at my house, I put it up at work, about wishful recycling. I like the new one that's come out, you know, about wishful recycling. That was in the paper and it's been in media to, wishful recycling is still not recycling. So I imagine that's going to continue for quite some time to help people understand what can and can't be recycled. I still drive by and I see plastic bags, you know, big garbage bags in recycling bins. I'm just, yeah. So my question has, is I'm finding new markets for the recyclable materials. I understand that that is evolving now as the stock, the materials that you're collecting is now getting cleaner, we hope, and will actually have some new markets. Can you talk about that a little bit going forward?
Not intelligently, but we are, we hope that we find some new markets. We aren't the, we don't market the material ourselves. We market it to a processor and he sorts it and then he markets it. So, you know, Pioneer and Garten, you know, I hope that sometime in the future we can have that market in the U.S. as opposed to ship it all abroad. But I can't say when that's gonna happen. I think people are heading that direction, that's what I've heard, but that's all I know. Sorry.
That's partly what I heard in a presentation at the mayor's conference, and it was a presentation, I believe, from, I believe it was DEQ, talking about efforts to find some new markets and to hopefully work toward a cleaner product that is actually something that, you know, the recyclable is the idea that actually turns into a new product. So it has to have, be clean enough to actually be processed.
You know, I can tell you that our statewide association has worked closer with the DEQ than they've ever worked before on this problem. So- So we are engaged with them, and we have conversations and conference calls, usually every other week our state association does with them. So it's been, it's not a good thing, but it's been a good thing for us and the DEQ, working closely together.
Well, that can only be good for all of us, though, because if we can get more materials properly, totally to the recycling, where it actually turns into a new product, I think it's a win. Just have to kind of get there. Some of us have old habits that we're trying to reprogram for ourselves and our families, and I appreciate the challenge in that. Somebody else wanted to, who has, wanna circle back? Counselor Anderson, and then anybody else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Clarify something here for me, if you would. The, another dumb question, okay, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, okay? The rates that were here, we only get billed, as homeowners, we're only getting that bill every other month.
That's correct.
So the, the rates that are on here, is that a per month or the every other month?
That's a per month.
That's a per month, okay. All right. And just a suggestion here. I saw something on TV once, and I think it may have been down at Garten Foundation. It was absolutely fascinating to see, I think they were storing the stuff that they could not send over to be recycled to China. And I just found that, I don't know, maybe I'm silly, but I found that to be absolutely fascinating. And so that may be just a suggested work session, you know, tour at some point that the council might have some interest or might be helpful in understanding a little bit more about, about stuff, so I don't know. That, just something I throw out. Finally, it's Reed Carlson, not Anderson.
Oh, Reed Carlson.
It's Carlson. Thank you.
You should have corrected me.
Sorry, I had to dig up my old email.
That's his boss back there.
I just needed to correct the record here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for being willing to answer our questions. Is there anybody, I don't have anybody else signed to testify. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this issue on the record? Don't all rush up at once. Okay. Nobody else wants to talk trash? So I am, thank you very much. What I'd like to do is enter into the record a letter that I received, and you probably got a phone call, from Roger Stolli.
I did.
Okay, so you've had a conversation with him, and it's very much along the lines of what we've just talked about. His confusion about what the, the term in his bill, contam, recycle dash film, which I assume is plastic bags.
Correct.
Okay, were in his recycling, and he got dinged for it, and he was very upset about that.
Correct.
So you had an opportunity for a conversation with him?
I did, and I, we reversed his charges. My office staff reversed his charges right out of the chute. And then when I came in and found out about it, I reached out to him and talked to him and offered to send him some education material. And we sent material out to him, but he still wanted to get rid of the recycling cart.
Okay.
So, but I did have a nice conversation with him.
And he also noted on the copy of the letter that he sent to you and to the Kaiser Times, he asked that the City of Kaiser draft an ordinance to make it that retail stores may not use plastic bags in ordinance like they have in Eugene to help solve the community problem. So can you talk about the plastic grocery bags versus the, the black garbage bags, which I've, or other trash bags that people use to line, you know, household garbage? Is there, are people recycling large quantities of just the plastic bags? Or are they putting their recycling or other materials into their blue bin in those bigger bags?
Well, what it, typically, most people throw it in loose, but we do get a few bags in there with milk jugs or plastics or, you know, shredded paper in there, which both of them are hard on the system. And what happens to them is they get wrapped up around the chains and sprockets on the equipment. And about every two to three hours, they have to send people in and cut them off the chains and sprockets with knives before they can start to line back up. So that's our challenge, is getting those out of the stream. So, you know, a bag ban, that's up to you guys. It's, it's not.
So, and then, right, but all along, the grocery stores have had the bins near the front where if you have plastic bags from shopping, that you take it there, and then what do you do with that material? Because that's been already pre-sorted, correct?
We don't, we don't pick that material up, excuse me, we don't pick the plastic bags up from the stores.
Oh, no.
They have a different, that's taken care of at their level.
Okay.
So on the, on the, some of the cities that have banned the plastic bags, have they seen a reduction in the bags being in the recycling?
You know.
I just asked that question.
And I don't know the answer.
You don't know, okay.
That would be actually very helpful information. We have had some people who are concerned about the impact of plastic bags and whether a ban would actually be helpful or not. So is it possible for somebody to see if there's industry information that could help inform a conversation?
Yes, and I'll, I'll reach out to the recycling coordinator over in Corvallis, because they do have a bag ban.
Okay, that would be helpful. All right, appreciate that. Anything further, counsel? All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm looking to the city attorney for keeping the record open.
It's up to council on how you wanna handle it. There was some sentiment to continue the hearings. It's up to council, probably by motion if there's not consensus.
So what I'm hearing, so before we do that, can you talk to me, I was, just said we're done, but I do have one more question, this timeline, because Counselor Freeman rightly pointed out that you have to notify customers within a certain timeframe before our rates can go up. If we continued until our next council meeting, that pushes everything out a couple of weeks. So we would continue till the first one in December, which means the, the order would not come back until our second meeting in December. And would that be effective then, within 30 days or immediately?
From notice?
Yeah, we'd need to notify 30 days in advance our customers. So we need, you know, probably 40 to 42 days to, to know when we, we need to get it out. And we would go for a February 1 date as opposed to a January 1.
Right, I saw that. So I'm wondering, though, if we push this out two more weeks, is, are we gonna bump up against that deadline? I'm trying to do a calendar calculation here.
I think there's flexibility in the calendar to push two weeks.
Okay, so by keeping this open for two more weeks, that'll give folks time to give input, and then we could come back and do an order at that time. Also, give us time if we have additional questions that we want to ask. Is there, by consensus, are we good with continuing this for two, till our next council meeting? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to, to state that it's, that we do a good job of getting the information out and inviting people and making sure that we're connecting the right resources, so that they can get their questions asked without blowing up your phone. You know, if there's some sort of material we can print or link to. I think, I think that's our responsibility to our, to our citizens to do a really good job of that. And if that gives us the time to do that, I think that's great, but I think it's important that we follow up on that, so that we're honoring the extension and the reason that we're asking for the extension. So, so for that, I mean, yes, but I just hope that we can, maybe, is there a link, John, or something we could post?
Well, all this information's on our website. I mean, so they can go to ours or Valley's website. And the Mid Valley haulers, I'd be happy to send you guys email at, or the links to all the sites if you guys want them.
Well, for me, the next step would also would be not just this information for the increase, but the, because that's not my concern, is to try to create an issue over increase. I understand the cost of doing business. It's to get people the right information about recycling, so that they don't have the bigger expenses and have to go to a bigger can and just, and eliminate the recycling, and that's my concern.
Yeah, and the only, the only issue that we can run into here is when we have a customer that calls us, we can't quote them a rate. And so, you know, that's the tough piece, because they wanna know what it's gonna cost them. So when this goes out into the public, then they're gonna call us and wanna know what their rate's gonna be, and we really can't tell them.
You could tell them a range.
We could tell them a range, if that's okay with you guys.
Thank you.
I think by going out to the next council meeting, then we'll have, you know, folks that want to weigh in, we'll have that opportunity. And then we will be able to go forward with the appropriate option and recommendation for the order. And then that would be, come back to council the second meeting in December, which I think is the 17th. And would that be effective, my question to the attorney was, though, is that effective immediately to give you the timeline you need to get notice to your customers?
Yes. The, it is not an ordinance, so it's not, it's, the order is effective immediately, subject to the notice. And then it's up to the haulers to give the notice, so.
And you would have.
And they would have enough time to be able to make a February 1 start date, it would appear from the calendar.
Right, you have a month and a half from then. Does that work?
That would work fine.
Okay, all right. So by consensus, that's what we will do, keep the record open. So if people want to send written testimony, they can do so and send to our city recorder.
So is it purely to keep the record open for written material, or do you want to actually schedule another public hearing at the next meeting?
And if I could interrupt, I think the consensus was to continue the hearing. We do not need to give extra notice. So, I mean, we don't have to pay for published notice, sorry, Eric, but. If the council announces that the hearing is continued to the December 3, or is that correct? Third meeting, then that's sufficient, and I assume we wanna take testimony, so I, I don't think you wanna just leave the record open.
That is correct.
So the announcement should be a continuation to that meeting.
Okay, so we are continuing this till December 3? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's go on then to item 7B, which is the Kaiser Development Code text amendments development standards. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Withum.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. Clearly, I'm not Nate Brown, who you are used to talking. I like to say I'm the younger, more handsome version, but I know, I know it can be debatable at times. So tonight, we have five sections of the development code. And essentially, four of them are just scrivory-like changes. They're to align the changes that are proposed. The substance is in 2.315, which houses our development standards. And the, you know, the development code, we change it from time to time. This one went to planning commission back in September. There was no public testimony at that meeting, and it was unanimously supported. Primarily, the reason we were changing it was kinda twofold. One, there's, there was a lot of confusion in our code regarding what we call a, well, development review is normal, but something that doesn't comply with the code, we process those, and they are called a development standards alternative. And there was, the code was unclear as to what that process was. So when a certain movie theater wanted to come in on a property up in Area B, and the nature of a movie theater didn't lend itself well to have 50% ground floor windows in the places that theaters would be up against the road, which is what our code would require, they wanted to look at an alternative. So we kind of had to kind of finagle the code, and ultimately, we came to planning commission with it, which was the intent of a design standards alternative. But this change, there's basically four things that these changes are gonna do. The first is to clarify once and for all the difference between a design standards alternative and development review. And design standards alternative, they will be considered a 2B procedure. It'll go to planning commission. Staff will make a recommendation. Planning commission will make the decision, except in the case of Kaiser Station, which we will come to you folks with. Development review will stay as it has been for the past, geez, 20 years. And that will be done in conjunction with a building permit when it comes in, and done at the staff level, to basically assess and determine that the site and the building complies with the standards that are in 2.315. So as long as it meets it, we can just move forward, and it's, it's better for the business community to keep it streamlined. Some cities, they do design review for everything a year before committees and commissions, and it, it slows down the, the process for commercial projects especially. So that's, you know, kind of first and foremost, what we're looking to do with the proposed text. Secondly, since we had the text open, we looked at a few areas where we had some repetition over the years as the standards were changed. There was some, there was some added language that came in when the Kaiser Station design plan was created and when the EG zone was created, that pulled some design standards in, and they basically repeated them. We had like three or four, just an example, we had three or four different instances in the design standards that talked about pedestrian connections every 300 feet. So we kind of combined those into one. So we did some wordsmithing to clean it up. The other, I think, substance piece, which I'm personally excited that we're changing, is our color standard. You know, color is, it's a, it's a strange animal, and the market and architecture and style changes from time to time. When I first started working here, we had a physical color swatch that people would come in and look at, and it was this big, thick book. And we would say, okay, yes, you can paint it this color, but not this color. Well, why not? Those look the same. I don't know. It's the one that isn't allowed. And then we adopted a standard that had saturation levels, XYZ factor, red, green, blue factors, and LRV, light reflectance value. And they all sounded great, but as a staff person and as a developer, they were very, it was very hard to tell someone what color they could paint their building. And so we're proposing some language for color, which we think simplifies it. We borrowed some language from a couple of other cities. It's more general in nature. We did decide to keep the light reflectance value, the LRV, because it truly is allegedly, it's set up to measure how bright a color seems based on the sun either reflecting on it or how much it's absorbing. And that's a pretty easy number to get. Every paint company lists it, and we can, you know, whatever the paint brand is, it'll have what the LRV is. So we're simplifying that color standard, at least we think. And we're hoping that that will speak a little better to, I guess, the, the current design vernacular that people like to see. I will say that Nate has been extremely good at being very creative in his implementation of our color standards, to work with developers and the business community as a whole, and still, you know, trying to be sensitive to what we want as a community, which is really for things to look nice. So, but, but the changes to color, I, I think they're long overdue, and hopefully, they will do a good job of making sense for everybody. And then lastly, a little bit of substance there. Our multifamily design standards, they were sucked into this section of the development code when the infill standards kind of went away, and they didn't go away, they just got incorporated into the code throughout. And so one of the, one of the changes that we're proposing on this language is there was some kind of weird language where it said, we only are gonna look at multifamily building massing for articulation and the, the overall massing if you're within 50 feet of like a residential zone. And really, the intent there is that when we're looking at multifamily complexes, we want the buildings to look nice. We want them to have a residential character. We want them to fit in with our community. And so we're basically saying now with these changes that, hey, when you have multifamily development, and it's adjacent to essentially public streets and the built environment, we wanna see some articulation and some massing that's kind of consistent with what the market's building these days. So those are, those are pretty much the substance that we're, we're bringing before you guys. With that, I would be, you know, any questions you have, I'd look to answer those to the best of my ability. And otherwise, we're kind of asking you to look at directing Shannon to come back with an ordinance to adopt the changes. So with that, if you have questions.
Did I open the public hearing? Public hearing is now open. My bad.
Please incorporate everything he said. What he said.
What he said.
Yeah, it's not abdicated.
No, it was very thorough.
Shay, could you start over?
I was gonna say, um.
No, I was thinking about, anyway. Questions on the staff report? Looking, looking. So I have one of those on multifamily. One of the conversations around accessory dwelling units has been when the addition of those would trigger, like if somebody has a duplex and then they add an ADU, that becomes multifamily. So is that going to, is this going to impact? So is that going to, is this going to impact the cost of that kind of development?
No, it wouldn't in this case, Kathy. That's kind of a different conversation, and when we bring you guys the ADU stuff, I think that we'll speak to that a little bit better. Realistically, multifamily development in the building code for this specific set of standards would be a singular building with three or more units within a singular building.
Okay.
So it would only apply to those types of multifamily buildings.
All right. So a triplex, so it's a single building, you know, structure, one roof, and that has three separate residences?
Yes.
So that'd be more like that rather than an accessory dwelling unit which is detached?
Correct.
Okay.
Single family's one to four units.
One to four, okay. So this would be five or more?
Right.
Okay, excellent.
Well-
Or-
Not for building code purposes.
Yeah. And in our, in our design, in this, in Section 2.315 specifically, we have a separate set of design review standards for single-family residences. So they don't go to that, which generally, an accessory dwelling unit, so the ADU, either the detached or the attached, would fall under that single-family design vernacular. But this set of standards would specifically be for those buildings that would house the three or more individual units within one building, and that's where the building code would look at that as a multifamily building.
So is that an issue regarding funding and so forth? How we categorize multifamily versus the four or more? I don't think so. Okay. I mean, in my world, one to four is single-family, and five or more is multifamily, but if building, you know, that's just from our definition, so building codes is a different definition I'm learning, so that's great, because I'm not the developer in homeownership, so. Yeah. Okay, good to know. Because one of my concerns is making sure that when you go into multifamily, that it looks nice, but also remains affordable. So I push back a little bit on adding anything that would unnecessarily increase the cost of building a multifamily, because we, affordable housing is such a desperately needed sector of our community.
Yeah, and one of the things, Kathy, that might help, we talked about this a little bit at planning commission, because a couple of planning commissioners had that same sentiment with affordable housing specifically. The beauty about with, I mean, in my opinion, the beauty about clarifying the process for the design standards alternatives is that I think that if we were in a position, at least at the staff level, if we were in a position where somebody came in and said, hey, we want to do this affordable housing project, it's going to guarantee a certain rental rate for the next 60 years, you know, true affordable housing project. And the design vernacular, they just said, well, we just can't build that, it's too difficult. I mean, there's not a lot in here, it's not super, you know, daunting for them to meet it, but it would be a perfect opportunity for us to encourage them, you know, maybe you should propose a design standards alternative and take that to our planning commission and let them decide on that. So there would still be that opportunity for them in that, in that case.
Okay. All right, it's good to have some flexibility in that. So if a developer comes, and it's something they can't afford, and looks nice, but maybe doesn't have the additional steps, and we had this conversation during the Development Code, or Development Hearings for the Verta Clog-Cow Park, for lack of a better word, discussions, the design standards for that. So wanted to make sure that we don't add on unnecessarily. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, anybody, I don't have anybody signed up to testify. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue? All right, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings to adopt the proposed revisions of Section 2.315 Development Standards.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to come back with a bill for an ordinance to adopt, I just lost that verbiage. Creminately. Oh, okay, two, okay, two.
Whatever I said.
Yeah, what she said. Oh, my goodness, okay.
Try it one more time.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to come back with a bill for an ordinance to adopt the revisions to the Development Code as presented. All right. Further discussion? That was a complete brain fart on my part. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to then, before my brain completely leaves the building, to item 7C, which is Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Administration Contingency, and Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Police Vehicle. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Oh. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I come before you tonight to present two supplemental budgets. The first one is related to our general and auto liability insurance. As a reminder, we typically budget 75% of the premium, of the full premium, as an ongoing expense. We're involved in what's referred to as a retro program. So as, as claims come in, we move money out of contingency into the premium line to pay those ongoing claims. My request tonight is to move seven, or to move $25,000 from our contingency line item to our general administration, to provide appropriations for the retrospective liability insurance obligation. The second supplemental budget tonight is to recognize $45,000 in insurance proceeds and to appropriate that amount of money to provide for an additional police vehicle to replace one that was damaged in an accident, in an accident during the previous fiscal year. So with that, if you have any questions, I feel free to address those. Otherwise, I'd recommend you close the public hearing and adopt the two resolutions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report for the resolution? And I have nobody signed up to testify. Is there anybody who would wish to speak on this, on these resolutions for the supplemental budgets? All right. Close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 for the Authorization for Supplemental Budget on the General Administration Contingency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Administration Contingency. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Authorization for Supplemental Budget for the General Fund Police Vehicle.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund Police Vehicle. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And that will do it for public hearings. Let's move on then to administrative action. Item 8A, which is Resolution Approval of Field Usage Rates for 2019 Season at Kaiser Little League City Park. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. Each year pursuant to the park management agreement for the management of the Little League Park, the manager, in this case Kaiser Little League, has to present what their new field slot rates are going to be. So we requested that's due by December 1 each year, so Little League was early. This year, at our request, they indicated there was not going to be any increase in the field slot rates. So, but however, even though there's no increase, the council still approves the rates each year. So we have a resolution approval of the field usage rates, which are the same rate as the 2018 season, for your consideration. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report?
I have one.
Uh, Council President Parsons.
So Shannon, this was the Little League's rates, correct? They said they just, they didn't-
Yeah, they're not going to increase the field slot rates this time.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Approval of the Field Usage Rates for the 2019 Season at Kaiser Little League City Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Approval of the Field Usage Rates for the 2019 Season at Kaiser Little League City Park. Further discussion? And I just have one clarification for folks. You may be aware of the Kaiser Little League Long Range Planning Task Force, which will be meeting again tomorrow night. This is unrelated to that, the recommendations from that task force won't be coming to council probably until the spring, at the earliest later, depending on how long it takes for that task force to make recommendations. So this is for right now. Any changes that happen as a result of the task force work will be coming to council later on, and won't affect this operational year. So just so folks know that these are two separate processes.
Thank you.
Okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8B is a resolution concurring with the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, SCATS, Policy Committee requesting the City of Salem to undertake the required actions for the Salem River Crossing. Senator Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. The Mayor, Council, President Parsons, Councilor Anderson requested this item beyond the agenda. City of Salem, as you know, through the long, long process with the third bridge, moved that forward a few years, a couple years ago or more, it was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, or LUBA. LUBA remanded that decision back to the City of Salem, and the City of Salem hasn't acted on those remand issues, so it sits there. The Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study Policy Committee, SCATS Committee, reviewed that and has sent a letter to the City of Salem requesting the City of Salem undertake the required actions from LUBA, namely, to complete the final environmental impact statement. So I've included a copy of that SCATS letter, as well as the attachments involving, I think there's a memorandum from ODOT, and as well as some extra figures that table there. And so the matter before you is to review that, and if desired, adopt the attached resolution. If it's adopted, we will send a copy of the signed resolution with those attachments to the City of Salem, expressing the council's interest that they move forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the resolution or the letter itself? You may have noted that I did sign it as chair of the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, SCATS. After lengthy discussion regarding this issue, we've been trying to follow it at SCATS to see if we can get this moving forward. We are coming up against a deadline. The funds for the environmental impact statement are from a federal grant, so we have to finish the environmental impact statement. So not moving on it means that at some point next year, by September of next year, we will run afoul of the grant assurances, and this has got to get done, or there could be financial consequences that could include repayment of that grant, which is coming up on about $8 million. So, you know, just not finishing this is not an option. In addition, not finishing it, or just finishing it and saying, hey, we recommend no build, I would strongly encourage us not to do that. A lot of good work has gone into this process to study thoroughly the options for moving people across the river, from one side to the other, and more importantly, across our region. So there are some, there's some new data that was included in your packet, where you can see that the number of crossings per day have now exceeded the height of the traffic that was prior to the recession. So we've gone sailing past that, and as everybody who has even attempted to get across that river knows, any sort of glitch and everything backs up on both sides, which not only impacts East Salem and West Salem, but also our region. We have transit that reaches all the way now to Lincoln City, Lincoln County Transit has buses now that run across the bridge into the transit center downtown. There used to be a, oh, I'm looking at Director Bush to help me with this one. It was a, an agreement between Salem-Kaiser Transit to run buses, and the Spirit Mountain to run service, and that is now with Lincoln County Transit to run buses.
They're the ones that run.
And they are, right, so they are now running that service, but it has to cross the bridges. So the impact is not just local, it's regional. But I know I'm preaching to the choir here. But it's on the record. Anyway, and I would also encourage people, if they are interested in having this, hearing this conversation, it will be presented to the Salem City Council next Monday night, starting at 6 o'clock. All right, anything, any questions, comments, discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, I will be happy to sign that. 8C. I thought you did. I got ahead of myself. All right, Council President Parsons would like to make a motion that we can then vote on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I would like to do that.
All right, that was discussion.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Concurring with Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, SCATS, Policy Committee requesting the City of Salem to undertake the required actions for the Salem River Crossing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, Concurring with Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, SCATS, Policy Committee requesting the City of Salem to undertake the required actions with Salem River Crossing. Now discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry.
Apparently, I need a vacation.
What do you got in that drink?
Pardon?
What do you got in that?
Coffee.
It really is water. Just checking. Okay, yeah. Let's go on C. Let's do that. 8C, which is Resolution Establishing Buildable Land Supply Housing Needs Analysis Project Advisory Committee. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Withham.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Mayor, City Councilors, so we have a resolution for establishing a project advisory committee. City was recipient of a grant through the state to update our housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory because of our status as a rent burden community. The great news is, is that we're going to get the project, well, the project is kind of already underway, even though we don't technically have a signed contract with the consultant, but they're willing to do some work outside of that. So we recently had a conference call to talk about strategy, getting things moving. We really want to have our first project advisory committee in the month of December to keep things on track. So yes, super, super quick. So we're hoping that we can get this resolution pushed on through tonight, so we can get that going. The other piece in the recommendation is we also are looking for a council liaison to be a part of those meetings. We don't have exact dates of meetings yet. As I said, the first meeting is, we're shooting for the month of December, although I'm not sure that's going to happen with the state the way it is. And it's a duration of four meetings for sure, possibly a fifth if necessary. The whole project is supposed to wrap up by June of 2019, so real quick. And we will have an updated version of a buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis, which will be extremely helpful in our long-range planning. So with that, if you have any questions, one thing I would like to point out, Nate, he reached out to kind of general folks that volunteer for things and had a really robust, robust response, like 32 people jumped on board and said, hey, we're willing to help, we're willing to help. So he talked the consultant, the consultant really only wanted six or seven people. He talked them up to letting us bring 11, and so the 11 names that he's kind of put before you are the folks that he's kind of said, hey, let's put these folks into this, getting involved, they're not on other committees, we haven't seen them a bunch before, so get some new faces and move forward with that project. So with that, we're asking that you adopt the resolution, and then make a minute, a minute motion to assign the folks, and assign a council liaison.
Aye.
Okay, write down the steps here, because I'm going sideways, all over the place tonight. All right, so any questions on the staff report? So this is another, yet another study. So your shop is very, very busy, with two others that are underway, and this will add a third one, on top of everything else. And by the way, I hear from people in the building community, they love working with you guys because you are so prompt in getting materials to them and permits issued. So on top of everything else, you're keeping things flowing. So I just want to pass on that. Kudos. Time, time again, people do reach out to me, and it's because it's good stuff happening out of planning. So I want to thank you guys for that. All right, any questions on the staff report for this committee? All right, Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, Establishing the Buildable Land Supply Housing Needs Analysis Project Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, Establishing the Buildable Land Supply Housing Needs Analysis Project Advisory Committee. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So Council President Parsons, do you want to read the names of the folks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council appoint the following individuals to the committee. James Hutches, Danielle Bethel, Ron Burson, Blaise Idzana, Carol Dorfler, Felicia Squires, Nick Stevenson, Stefani Iverson, Rick Coon, David Dempster, and Mike Kerr.
With a council liaison of Councilor Laura Reed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council-
I guess I didn't hear the motions.
It's okay. I'm not the only one who's AWOL tonight. It's been moved and seconded to recommend the members of the advisory committee with council liaison. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we, I really want to thank everybody who put their name in. It was a large number of people, and I'm glad that Mr. Brown was able to talk them up to the larger number. Welcome to Kaiser, to the consultants. That's how we roll around here. People want to get involved in a very meaningful way. I look forward to that, the results of that study. Council President Parsons, would you please let us know what's on the consent calendar tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have seven items on the consent calendar. A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Jelco Construction Company for Water Main Replacement Project 2018-2019. B is a resolution approving the city engineer's report declaring the city's intent to form Snook Grove Street Lighting Local Improvement District, providing notice and setting a hearing. C is a resolution authorizing disposition of unclaimed found personal property. D is a resolution extending the city manager's employment contract from 2019 to 2020. E is a resolution extending the city attorney's employment contract from 2019 to 2020. F is an approval of the October 29, 2018 work session minutes, and G, approval of November 5, 2018 regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. I'd like to poll C.
C? All right. Anything else? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar items A, B, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
The consent calendars items A, B, D, E, F, and G have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Teague, this would be directed at you, sir. So I read through it, so I comprehend what we're doing here. What I'd like to know is, would there be any objection from the council or yourself, Chief, if we could maybe look through some of those items and see if they could be donated to our McNary closet? Anything that might, the kids might use, or things that are, items that might be of, not of a personal nature, of course, but something that we could, and I'd be happy to take the time to do that if that's permissible with everyone.
Microphone, please.
Councilor Ryan, when you polled it, I pulled up this resolution on my computer here, and it's not coming up. I'm getting some random things. So I don't know what's in that list.
It's a car and, kidding. It actually doesn't itemize it, sir, and that's one of the reasons I thought I would maybe-
I guess to answer your question, I might have to defer to Shannon Johnson.
We could certainly look at working with staff on that. They're very nominal value kind of items. I mean, you can see clothing, glasses, cell phone, keys. We keep them for a certain amount of time until the storage gets a little overwhelming. So that's, that's why it's brought to council. We need to actually change that ordinance because we have to come to council some, seems like a couple of times a year on this. So I, I'd probably give, who would it be?
I would.
Can, your department to connect with, sir?
Probably my department.
Maybe it's something you and I could do together with the blessing. And then, of course, we don't want keys or cell phones or something like that. We're looking at items that we could use for McNary closet for the kids.
Microphone, please.
A lot of it's stuff that's left over here in the community center after events.
Sure.
So it's not uncommon to have one flip-flop, you know, a hair biduba, things like that. So a lot of it is, you know, assured or issued, that kind of a thing. It's, so there's not a lot of value. It's just we just collect it and it just grows.
That's okay. I'm not looking, that's actually, I mean, that's perfect because we don't, we're not looking for value. We're looking for items that we can donate to the closet. So are you familiar with the McNary closet?
I am, yes.
Okay, perfect. So if, unless anyone has the objections.
Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just also wanted to point out that all of our other Kaiser schools are developing closets as well.
Perfect.
So the, you know, the middle schools have one, and the elementary schools are trying to build one too. So if there are things that appropriate for those things, that is also needed.
Yeah, I just found this. I just did a search for glasses and finally found it. None of this is police department property. None of it's entered our property room, so it's all, looks like it's all from the facilities here.
Okay.
Ours always appears to you itemized.
Okay, thank you. And if you want, if council wants a record, we, I mean, I'm happy to make a list of what we donate so that everybody knows what we went through, but I don't know if that's necessary to follow up. It's up to you.
As I understand from surplus requirements, it's things with a value under $50. The state doesn't require that we enter that into state surplus.
There would be next to nothing at that value.
Okay. So yeah, if it's gently worn, usable items, I, by consensus, the council would agree that that would be a good place for it, those items to land.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else on item C? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of item C of the consent calendar.
Second.
Item C has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Let's go on to council liaison reports. Councilor Anderson, can we go ahead and start with you? Well, we can start at that end, but I think Councilor Ryan just got back.
I have a lot to say. I'm just kidding. Sure, we can start with me. It'll be short and sweet.
All right.
And then I am, I'm just looking back on getting, getting a schedule with the time zone and changing, catching up, and I have a lot of meetings to look forward to, and I'll be happy to follow up on those when I have them. Thank you.
All right. Council Freeman. Are you one of the elves that were busy Sunday morning?
Yes, we were busy Sunday morning. We put up the Christmas decorations along River Road, cherry and chamomile, and shaved time off our record time of last year, so we're getting faster and faster. So thanks to Dave Wallery and everyone that attended. And Chief, thank you to our police escorts. We, it's amazing how many people are out at 6:00 a.m. in the morning on Sunday. We were actually quite amazed, and much nicer people this year. No horn honking or other gestures made to the group. So we really actually appreciate that. We try not to block traffic, but there are a couple of times where we block traffic for a little bit. But it was great. So again, thanks to everyone. I attended the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting, and they do, they will not be meeting in December, so their next meeting is January. Marion County Breakfast and Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on the 15th. And I just have to say, we had a record number of people that applied for committee. So thank you to Matt Lawyer and Trish Cranshaw, who posted it on the Kaiser Facebook page, and a lot of our committee members are doing lots and lots of outreach. And then again, a special shout out to Debbie Lockhart, our Deputy City Recorder, who has made these nice little cards and volunteers needed. So Trish is posting this on Facebook. So we really asked at the meeting last week how people are hearing about it, and it's Facebook and then personal acknowledgement. And we have our newest member to the Parks Board who will be recommended later, Mr. Hiddle, that's sitting out there with Mr. Lawyer. So it was great. It was awesome. The committee was really, really excited. And we also have a youth person that we'll be recommending to the Planning Commission of all things. So again, excited. We will not be meeting in December, so our next meeting will be January 17 of 2019. And we do have openings still. So Parks Advisory Board will have one opening. The Points of Interest will have two, and the Public Arts Commission has one. So that information is posted on our website with, I don't have the deadline, but it should be, you know, early January. So I would encourage everyone to apply for those. We did have some people that did apply this time, but they were not in attendance. And so we're, hopefully, I know Debbie's going to reach out to them and encourage them to see if their application still wants to be considered and come to our January meeting. And other than that, I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had a Kaiser Heritage Board meeting, and one of the things that we are doing is we are decorating the Heritage Center this Saturday, so that will be in its festive glory. So that will be fun. Also, Kaiser Homegrown Theater Board meeting, we're getting very close to announcing their 2019 season. I went to the Kaiser Community Band Concert, and that was really impressive, and it was, it was a lot of fun. It was, it was veteran-based and patriotic and really, really nice concert. Um, I'm trying to, I can't read my notes there. But never mind. Okay. So anyway, and I guess the only other thing that I have going on here, oh, the McNary Bazaar, that's what-
That was fun.
Yes, so I did go to that McNary Bazaar this Saturday, or this last Saturday. And so, yes, that was a lot of fun. And it was a lot more extensive than I was thinking. That was actually the first time I'd been. So that was a lot of fun. And then also, this, this Thanksgiving, I am actually going to be in the Turkey Dash. Probably not a whole lot of dashing going on, but it will be a lot of fun, and I think I look forward to that. Early in the morning where it might be raining, but yes, it'll, it'll be fun. And so thank you to those who are organizing those. We also have the Jingle Dash to look forward to, but don't think I'll be dashing in that. So that's all.
All right, happy dashing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I want to congratulate our new city counselors, Elizabeth Smith and Dan Kohler. And I want to give a shout out to both Mike and Sean, who both, who both have said that they're not going to step back, they're going to continue volunteering for the city. I thought that was really awesome. I went to the Chamber Board meeting for Councilor Anderson last week. They are now in their new building on River Road. They moved in on Saturday, finished the painting. And so that's right up off of Dietz, is it off of Dietz?
It's further down.
Okay, so where is that? Oh, it's further down. Autozone, that's it. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. It's a brown building, and they'll have their signage up that has, they don't have it yet, but they're waiting on getting their signage up. They've ordered it, and they're just waiting for it to come in. So there'll be a bunch of big signs. Look forward to that. So they're no longer at Kaiser Station, so please don't follow those signs. Go down River Road. I went to the Gubser Neighborhood Association meeting, and that was their last one of this year. They're not sure if they're going to continue in January, so stay tuned, we'll figure that one out. But they're gearing up for the holiday, so the Gubser Lights, and that will start on Friday, December 7. And I think city council's turn will be Sunday this year, on the 9. Also, went to the Marion County Commissioner Breakfast, where, you know, Janet Carlson has just one more meeting, but we did invite her to come to the others until she moves to Idaho. And her retirement party, don't forget, is December 4 at the Fairgrounds, which is the same night as the tree lighting, so we're going to be dashing, dashing in that one.
More dashing.
More dashing.
Hot dashing.
We have a Kaiser Little League Task Force meeting tomorrow, as the mayor specified, so this will be our second one. Good work's going on there. Also, I went, I attended the memorial for, or the funeral for Mike Hart, who was one of our original city counselors here in the city of Kaiser, and has been a longtime volunteer, and he'll be greatly missed. His wife Betty is on the board for the fire department, so we will at least continue to see her. Also, let's see, I think, Gubser, I had a lot of stuff. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Herrera.
Yes, I, thank you, Madam Mayor. Clint did a great job talking about the Parks, I attended the Parks Board, very active people there.
Pull your microphone a little. There you go.
Testing, testing.
There you go.
Happy Thanksgiving. Also, on Veterans Day, I got to talk, have a long conversation with a young veteran, not young, but longtime veteran who happened to be my brother. And I want to thank all the veterans out there. I see one over there, young man over there that I used to know when he was a young, young man, veteran. I salute all the veterans out there. Also, December 3 is our Leadership, Oregon Leadership Summit, which I believe, are we attending?
I am.
Leadership Summit. And then of course, Janet Carlson's on the December 4, and that's at Cascade Hall. They actually moved it to a bigger location because of the response. It's going to be, I hope, I hope we represent Kaiser very well for, I know we will. But Janet's been amazing. And boy, I've watched her, oh, her leadership's amazing. And on December 7, I will be attending the YMCA Masquerade Ball. So I still haven't decided what I'm going to dress up. And I think maybe I'm going to go as a city worker, maybe, I don't know.
Get your hard hat.
Also, I will not be running in the Turkey Dash this year. I'm going to take a year off. I'm going to dash to my turkey on Thursday, though, I will tell you that. Actually, we're going to have tamales, so anybody-
There you go.
Nice.
Actually, we have both, you know, so. And then again, I want to speak a little bit about Mike Hart's memorial service, which is just beautiful. You know, him and, him and Betty, I call them the original power couple of Kaiser. He was one of the, actually founding fathers of Kaiser. You know, he was one of, they had the runoff, when, you guys know how that works?
Yes.
They had, I think he was number seven.
He was number seven.
And Newton was number six. And originally, they weren't supposed to be, but they expanded it. And ever since then, they call each other six and seven. So that was kind of cool. But that was wonderful. I was in charge of the duck table for Mike, as we all know, Mike was a huge duck fan. And I set up all the duck fans, and I want to thank Chris for your help, and all the folks that attended. Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you for your kind words, and Marlene, everybody that attended. It was a wonderful, it was actually very emotional for me, because Mike, I go back to the 70s when he was the head of softball association. And like I said, I went in there to complain about something and ended up being buddies with him when I left. And we were friends ever since. One more thing I wanted to tell people is, I'm also on the Hall of Fame Committee, which I'm going to announce who are Hall of Fame inductees for next year for McNary. And I'm kind of excited about some of these because our 2009 state baseball champions, who was the last state championship from, happened to be my nine and 10-year-old group that went to California. And so the special part, and my son's part of that, and so they will be honored in the Hall of Fame, also along with Lisa Blush, which, you know, I don't know a whole bunch about her. She was before my time in the 80s. Mike Doertie was a coach, who was the original coach for the state champion McNary Celtics when they won the state championship in '68, I believe, first year at McNary, and they won the state championship at basketball. And then, of course, our hometown buddy, Sean Kittner, from the '97 state championship, these will be inducted. It's on March 15, 2018, and we will have tables available. I hope the city of Kaiser would like, would really love for us to be represented there. So that's a big deal for our national, or Hall of Fame for McNary. I'm along with Joe Egley, or with the Events Committee, so that's a lot of fun with Joe.
Oh, gosh, yes.
He's something else. That's pretty much all I have. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and a safe Thanksgiving, and- I want to wish everybody a, uh, happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving, and, uh, I hope everybody, uh, takes the time to be thankful for all that we have and all that we are fortunate to, um, share with others, so let's be kind to one another, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to start out my time just with a question. With the chamber moving locations, I wasn't sure, is the city responsible for moving those signs to direct folks to that?
I think, I think, I believe that Danielle Bethel said that she's spoken to, uh, our friend, Mr. Lawyer, right there, to ask him to move those signs.
Okay, very good. I figured Mr. Lawyer would be on top of things, so, but I just wasn't sure, but, okay, appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to add my congratulations to all of, uh, all of the candidates that were, that took part, uh, that were successful, that were not successful. Um, I, my admiration goes out to folks that put their name out on the line, um, to, to do that sort of thing. In some cases, you can be subjected to some abuse these days, um, and, um, I just appreciate folks, um, willing to, to serve like that, so thank you to everyone who did so, and my congrats also to, uh, Mr. Kohler and, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, for, for your success, and looking forward to some good things as you come onto the council. I was not able to, uh, attend the Claggett Creek Watershed Council meeting on November 7th, uh, just due to some, an illness that, that had cropped up, so I'll have to defer to another time to report on that. Was able to make the, uh, real glad to have seen the Salem Police Department Headquarters Building groundbreaking take place. It's a huge, huge thing, uh, for Salem, but I would say for our, for our community as well. Big project, and they are moving lots of dirt down there, so I'm real, real, real psyched to, to see that happening. Um, and appreciate, uh, Councilor Parsons attending that Kaiser Chamber Board meeting for me. Um, I had another conflict with a board retreat on another group that I'm just starting on, so I appreciate her doing that for me as well. Because we've got great presence and, um, work by our Boys and Girls Club, uh, here with our, with our club here in Kaiser. Did, want to note that their annual Civil War Dinner auction took place last Thursday. Lots of fun and real enjoyable. Was able to, uh, Betty Hart was in attendance at that, and, you know, it was really, really awesome to see her, her there as well. Mike, uh, was a fellow board member on the Salem Boys and Girls Club Board, and he's going to be really, really missed. Um, he had a nice, uh, nice, uh, remembrance during the, during the evening too, so I really appreciate, um, all of his years of service on that fantastic organization's board. And then, of course, I'm want, I'm going to be thankful, because the University of Oregon is going to lose to Oregon State this year in Civil War this Friday. So with that, happy Thanksgiving to y'all.
It's on.
Lunch challenge. Got a little lunch challenge.
What did you have in mind?
Well, whoever wins, uh, buys, gets a free lunch from the other person. I don't mean Taco Bell either, I mean, you know, something.
You're on, you're on now.
All right, you all heard it here. All right, and I want to join with all of us in remembering seven. Uh, Mike Hart, uh, former councillor, Mike Hart, who, um, I didn't even know the extent of his volunteerism and his commitment to, uh, to public service for decades, as we heard about the work that he and with his, uh, his sidekick and lifetime partner, his wife Betty, um, have given to our community, every community in which they have lived. And I really appreciate Betty and the support that our community, she has a big family, we are all family here, and are here to support her, and we are very thankful, um, for the service that Mike has given. Um, he has asked that if you want to remember him, to do so with the Boys and Girls Club, because they just love kids and want to see them succeed, so want to, uh, uh, put that out there as well, I was glad to be a part of the community celebration of his life. Um, in other news, uh, was able to go to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission and to, to give a presentation on the homeless initiative. We are recruiting for Ally Trichell's successor. She has, uh, she was able to complete the asset map, so I encourage you to go to the website and see what the work that she has done there. It's really helpful for us to understand what we're doing in our community, and I've got to tell you, when she, she was able to identify over 500 different efforts that are going on in our communities to serve people who are homeless. And the really cool part is that not only are we doing the work, but we're collaborating better to serve our chronically homeless, over 100 of our hard-to-house, hard-to-serve folks are now in housing and services. Way to go, we're going to continue to do even more and make a difference for people. I want to join with, um, all of us in congratulating councillors-elect Elizabeth Smith and Dan Kohler, and to the council candidates, Sean Lepoff and Michael DeBlossi. Folks, this is how we do campaigns in our community, we work hard, talk about who we stand for and who we are in a very positive way. Congratulations. Um, oh, and also, uh, there's two of us that ran unopposed. I think Council Herrera and I both ran unopposed. Way to go.
Yeah, okay. Now you have a symbol.
That's right. So I'm very, thank you to the community for supporting Council Herrera and me for another term, and we will work hard for you. Uh, you got the notification for the Council of Governments Annual Dinner, you got the save of the date, so please do plan to attend, it will be right here, so it's convenient. Uh, I am the board chair this year, so I got to pick the location. Thank you, Tracy, for helping make this, uh, come together. Um, attended the, um, Holiday Bazaar for our McNary Athletic Boosters, and it was a fabulous bazaar this year, lots of great vendors, and most importantly, a lot of great money raised for our student athletes. Um, coming up, you've already heard that we're going to have the Long Range Planning Task Force for Little League tomorrow. Next week, we have the Career Technical Education Center Advisory Council on Monday. Tuesday, um, I will have SCATS, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. Uh, Thursday, next week, we will have, or the following week, on the 29th, is the Steering Committee for the MIBLAM homeless initiative, and, uh, folks, watch for opportunities to help out with the warming shelters. When we hit freezing, uh, those are open, and we have two locations here in the Salem-Kaiser Metro area, and there's other areas that are opening shelters, warming shelters as well. Couple of extras, um, going into December, the Retirement for Commissioner Carlson and the Tree Lighting are on the 4th, the Parade is on the 8th. Then the, uh, Kaiser Fire District Center Breakfast is on the 9th, and also that night, uh, Sunday, the 9th, is the Council Night at the Food Barrel. Uh, it's different from our traditional time, but, uh, they're trying to accommodate the parade. And then the Heritage Christmas over at the Kaiser Heritage Center will be from 1:00 to 5:00 on the 15th. For a full calendar of, um, holiday events, go to the city of Kaiser website, that is posted there. All right. Okay, Council Herrera, and then I'll go to our, uh, youth councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I forgot to mention today was, uh, Kaiser United.
Yes.
We had our lunch, and, um, uh, our Latino Action Committee provided the lunch, so we had...
Tacos.
Mexican food, tacos, very good. We had tamales and stuff, I should have, uh, let the staff know, but we, uh, we took care of the lunch today for 22 people, and it was pretty cool.
Fabulous.
Go Ducks.
Quick, Council, Youth Council Ferris.
Um, so I have a few things. Senior Scholarship Reporting has just started, so all of the seniors are, um, reporting what scholarships they have applied for or, um, received, and this will continue on throughout the scholarship season. Um, the Holiday Choir Concert is on December 17th at 7:00 PM, so all of you are welcome to come. Conferences are in progress for both CTEC and McNary, so, um, I encourage all students and, uh, parents to come and get feedback. It's Thanksgiving break for students, and I'm sure that, uh, a lot of students, along with myself, are excited about that, and quite a few teams are, uh, have shown up for the Oregon Game Project Challenge, which I covered last meeting, which was on the 17th, so it's going to be excited, exciting what, um, is created this year, and happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council, not on tonight's agenda. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
I have nothing, thanks.
Tim.
Nothing as well.
Chief.
One more, new cop gone solo.
And, uh, one question, um, so there was a report that the, our, uh, Traffic Safety Unit is now, um, fully staffed.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, but that was, that's been one of the biggest, um, complaints that I get on Facebook and other emails and so forth, is about people zipping through town, so for those who have gotten into a zippy habits...
Merry Christmas.
We're now fully staffed.
Fully staffed and actively working, uh, to increase traffic safety, not necessarily to give a bunch of tickets.
Were they nice?
Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, just a couple things, follow up on what Mr. Holland mentioned about the bathrooms at Kaiser Rapids Park. Contractor met with him this morning on some colors, make sure we had that right, both exterior, interior, uh, gutter colors, things like that. He indicates he should have the bathrooms done before Christmas, Merry Christmas, park users.
Oh, yes.
Um, the one thing that won't be done is the paving. Um, there'll be a short section of pavement between the parking lot and the bathrooms that, because of the time of year...
Yeah, we...
Um, they can't do, but it'll be growled up and accessible, so as soon as we can open them, they will be open, I will keep you updated. Um, the other item is, Council Anderson mentioned the Chamber of Commerce signs. I talked to Danielle Bethel last week, um, she asked me, basically, how do we go about getting those moved? And I said, "Well, you bring me a list of where you'd like them, and we'll put them up." And there was a bit of dead silence there for a few seconds while she thought that through, didn't realize that it took somebody to tell me where they want the signs. So as soon as I get that, we'll get them moved for them and get them put up. That's all I got.
Fabulous.
Mr. Witham.
Uh, Nate wanted me to let y'all know, happy Thanksgiving. He was not here, because he's with family in Utah, out of state, so just happy Thanksgiving from Nate, and he looks forward to seeing you guys when he's back.
I have a question.
And?
In-N-Out Burger.
Yeah, um, that's a, it's a restaurant.
Shane, I, I get asked daily, I don't know how many times, what is going on?
So we, we've had some conversations with Corey, uh, who was, I think he was who came to the meeting back in September, whenever it was.
It was.
We've been told it's close. We have not heard anything beyond that. Um, obviously, you know, the, the property owner did apply for, and we went through the process of doing a, basically a partitioning to carve off the sign site and the, the train area, so now that land can technically be actually done something with separately and on its own. Um, so that's in process, that, I don't think that partition plan's been recorded yet, we just kind of got that processed. Um, but we, we have not heard anything more, I'm sorry, I don't have a, I would, I would make one up, but I, I don't, I don't have a date, sorry.
Mr. Johnson.
Um, following up on that, the only thing I could add on the In-N-Out Burgers, our understanding, we don't, we're not privy to this, you know, people feel, people think the city controls these things, like, uh, the, these are private real estate transactions. Unlike a lot of Kaiser stations, our understanding that In-N-Out Burger is going to purchase the property rather than lease it, and it's also our understanding that they have entered, again, not confirmed, that they have entered into a sale agreement with Donahue Schreiber, but In-N-Out Burger's in the due diligence phase, and they are a very careful company. So they are, they have asked us for several documents that we have provided to them as part of their due diligence, so they move very carefully. There's also, we, our understanding was, is there was an issue with regard to, um, a warehouse, that they needed to have a warehouse within 200 miles, that, I don't know if that's going to affect their timing on that, um, because they like to have their hamburgers fresh, so that's the only thing that I can add off the top of my head with regard to your question, Marlene.
Drones.
Drones, we could do drones. Drones, little burger drones, yes, that would do. Other than that, I, I, I have nothing further.
Yeah, so the, the only, the only other thing to add is, just so that people understand, because we don't have a, a building or a business permit requirement in, in, a business license in, in Kaiser, uh, you know, unless they actually need a building permit to do something, very often the city is the last person to know if something's happening, a lot of that information is proprietary, the moment we get a hold of it, it's public information, because we can't very often keep all of that information private or to ourselves, because it becomes public information, so they don't tell us until they have to, so they don't run into issues with their competitors. So, um, we're not, we're not just holding out on information, typically, we don't know.
And it's their story to tell.
That's right.
Council Ryan.
Just to add to that, they do, they have purchased a warehouse, um, and once they start the development process, start building, once that process is there, it's five months to open, so once they've broken ground, it's five months, so it, it could easily be within, hopefully, the next year.
There's a lot of people who are salivating at the mere thought...
I know.
...of an tasty In-N-Out Burger.
Just a burger, people.
We, we want to promote this, this is going to be very good for Kaiser.
Excellent.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
But it's not going to be in my Christmas talking this year, I take it.
I hope not.